The January 15th meeting of the Planning Commission. And at this time, we will entertain the approval of the minutes. We have the October 9th, 2008, and November 13th, 2008 minutes. At this time, I will ask the Commission if there are any changes, revisions, clarifications. Please do so at this time. If there are none, the Chair will entertain a motion for acceptance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes from the October 9th, 2008 meeting, and the November 13th, 2008 meeting.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we will entertain postponements or withdrawals. If you have requests for a postponement or withdrawal, we'll consider those at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Rory Kaylee with EA Partners. Page one, item one. This is Plan 2008-71P Hampton Springs. Request a one-month postponement to February 12th.
Okay. Double-checking Mr. Salley. Is that correct? February 12th? Is that one month?
Yes, sir. That is your meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We have a request for a one-month postponement for Plan 2008-71P Hampton Springs. This is for property located at 4574 Harrisburg Road. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this request for a postponement? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for postponement of Plan 2008-71P until February 12th.
We have a motion and a second for a postponement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on your agenda, top of page two, under Final Subdivision Plans. Plan 2008-76F Bogie Estate Lot 1. Request a one-month postponement to February 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Kaylee. We have a request for a one-month postponement for Plan 2008-76F Bogie Estate Lot 1. This is for property located at 5846 Old Richmond Road. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this request for a postponement? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for postponement of Plan 2008-76F until February 12th, 2009.
We have a motion and a second for a postponement. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
And at the bottom of page two and top of page three, I've got two plans, both at the Guest property. They're both reapprovals. First one is Plan 2007-239F Guest Property, Unit 6A. And then on page three, it's Guest 2007-241F Guest Property, Unit 6C. Request a one-month postponement of both of these to February 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Kaylee. We have a request for a one-month postponement for Plan 2007-239F Guest Property, Unit 6A, and Plan 2007-241F Guest Property, Unit 6C. Both of these are located on a portion of William Way. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this request for a postponement? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for postponement of Plans 2007-239F and Plan 2007-241F until February the 12th.
We have a motion and a second for a postponement. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Matt Carter with Vision Engineering. If you'll turn to page three, item F, Plan 2008-117F Bruce Properties. The applicant requests to withdraw his waiver request on this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter. We have a request to withdraw the waiver request for 2008-117F Bruce Properties located at 3401 McFarland Lane. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this request for withdrawal? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for acceptance of the request to withdraw the waiver for Plan
We have a motion and a second to accept the request for withdrawal. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Are there any requests from staff, I guess? Do you have any?
Mr. Chairman, on page six of your agenda, item three, Development Plans, the very first item, Item A, DP 2008-137, the Mohammed Saraji property amended. We have been in communication with that applicant, and he has requested an indefinite postponement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Was that by email or letter or phone call?
It was, in fact, by email.
By email. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right. We have requests for a postponement. Did you -- you said indefinite. Is that right? Indefinite postponement for DP 2008-137 Mohammed Saraji property located at 432 South Broadway. This request was by the petitioner via email to staff. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this request for a postponement? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for indefinite postponement of DP 2008-137.
We have a motion and a second for indefinite postponement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Are there any additional requests for postponements or withdrawal at this time? Okay. At this time, I will ask the staff to review the land subdivision items that may qualify for our consent agenda today. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Salley to review those applications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, good afternoon. There are a few items on your seven-page meeting agenda that do qualify for consideration on your consent agenda. The first appears on page two, Item B of your meeting agenda. This is a final subdivision plan, Plan 2009-01F Marshall Property, Unit 2I. This is for property located for a portion of 3,000 Leestown Road near McConnell's Trace. There are two subdivision plans that have been recommended for reapproval by your subdivision committee. The first of those appears on page three, Item E of your meeting agenda. Plan 2005-196F Sharkey Property, Unit 2B. This is for property located on a portion of 1,700 Leestown Road. The other such plan is on page five, Item K of your meeting agenda. Plan 2006-240F New Market Phase 1, Unit 1E. This is for property located at 1201 Dearhaven Lane. There are two final development plans recommended for conditional approval by the subdivision committee that can be considered on your consent agenda. The first appears on page seven, Item C of your meeting agenda. DP 2009-02, an amended final development plan for Berrycrest Phase 2. This is for property located at 2385 Huguenard Drive and 223 Pasadena Drive. The other item is the next item on your agenda, page seven, Item D, DP 2009-03 Butch Co. Property, another amended final development plan for property at 1621 and 1637 Jaggy Fox Way. All five of these items can be considered on your consent agenda unless a Commission member or a member of the audience or an applicant would like those items discussed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salley. You've heard the reading of the consent agenda. Is there -- are there any applications that members of the audience, members of the Commission, would like to have heard today? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move for acceptance of the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion and a second for acceptance of the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Salley. Okay. We will now go into our next application. We'll give staff a moment to get set up.
Plan 2008-137F Hamburg Place Office Park Lot 3 amended. This is a plan that was previously approved by the Planning Commission on November 13th, 2008. The applicant has requested a continued discussion for a waiver request, which is why this is before you today. The lot in question is located on Alice Sheba Way out in the Hamburg office development between Vendor Way, which is down here, and Pink Pigeon, which is up here. Some of the businesses in the area, I believe, are the AAA office. There's a medical building in this area, and some other office uses, including the townhouse offices in Hamburg are in this general area of development. Here, we have a large detention basin in the development. This is the lot in question, and the waiver request before you is for a waiver on the sewer line to serve this lot, the sanitary sewer line. There's an easement here across Alice Sheba Way, and the line will come here to serve this lot with a manhole. Now, when this was all one lot, that was adequate. But by subdividing this property, they are required to run an eight-inch line to a new manhole to serve the development on this property. Now, the eight-inch line is required because it'll be over 150 feet extension, and that exceeds the limit for a lateral. That's their maximum. It also will require Department of Water approval. That's Kentucky Department of Water approval. The proposed development here is to be a childcare center, and they want to locate it back on the lot. And according to the applicant and to your waiver report, there is enough of a drop in slope here that they're concerned that they will have to do a lot of fill, potentially, with the construction of this center in order to meet the finished floor elevations that are required by our subregs. And as you can see in your report, you are required to have unfinished floor elevation of one foot above the elevation of that downstream manhole, which in fact will be the new manhole. The concern is if that is constructed in advance of the building, and that they then come in and they have to meet that finished floor elevation, that it could in fact require an unusual amount of fill, potentially, in order to meet that requirement. So they are requesting URO's permission to bond that extension and then coordinate that construction with the construction of that childcare facility. Staff has reviewed the waiver request. We've discussed it with engineering and at length with the applicant, and we are recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Phillips?
It's, Tom, it's not exactly a waiver. It's more of a postponement, isn't it? To -- or is it that we typically don't bond sanitary sewer extensions?
We typically don't.
Okay. So it's a waiver to the requirement, to the prohibition against bonding?
Well, it is a waiver of the bonding actions itself as specified in the subregs, but it is also a waiver of substantial completion. Because what we require before that plat is signed by the urban county engineer is that they complete the infrastructure. And since sewer is required to serve a lot, in order for them to accomplish this, they are requesting the waiver. And again, in a wish to coordinate the construction.
So the waiver, again, is in two parts. It's a waiver of the actual fiscal promise, the promissory that this work will in fact be done.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it's also a waiver of substantial completion prior to the engineer being able to certify the plan?
Yes, ma'am. It will allow them to record the plan. And it is 4-7D1 and 4-8 of your subregs, which are attached, of course, to your report. That is the specific request.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Are there any other questions for Tom? Uh, yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you. Tom, I guess, for clarification on my part, the intention is to put the sewer in, but they've got to get the fill in first and get the construction going to make that happen or the line's going to be above ground.
Right. Yes, sir. What the concern is, is that if they build the sewer first and set that elevation of the manhole, then in order to meet that finished floor elevation requirement, it could require excessive fill, which would be expensive and require a lot of work and that sort of thing. So they would like to coordinate those two things and minimize the amount of fill.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, there would be none would be the preferable solution.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Tom at this time? Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Matt Carter with Vision Engineering. We've reviewed the staff's report, and we're in agreement. One of the conditions on the report states that the applicant will add to the plat a note saying that no occupancy will be allowed to the daycare building until the sewer is built and accepted by the city. So we're okay with that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Are there any questions from the Commission for Mr. Carter? Okay. Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Copeland?
Mr. Carter. The floor elevation has to be higher than the manhole. The part that we see or the pipe underneath or exactly how does that work?
Right. It has to be one foot higher than the manhole rim.
Okay.
So the part you see, it has to be higher than that. And what we would prefer is that these people that are developing this lot be the ones to determine what that height needs to be. And they'll position the manhole where it best suits their needs, so.
Okay. But there's plenty of distance underneath the manhole rim for the pipe?
Yes.
Okay.
The manhole that we're tying to is approximately eight and a half to nine feet deep.
Okay.
So there's plenty of room to make it work. We just want to minimize how much fill has to go in on the lot. And they're currently working on a layout for that lot, but they haven't got into the details of that design yet. So they have not brought a development plan before you yet.
Doesn't this always happen? I mean, that you have to work to the manhole rim?
It does happen, but there's kind of an added benefit to the people developing this lot is they would be able to choose what that manhole elevation is. Whereas the way it normally happens, you don't have any choice. You have to live with what's there. And since they're the only ones going to be using this sewer, we felt that it would be appropriate that they make these decisions. Nobody else would be able to use the sewer. It would only be, you know, built to serve that one business, and it would not be affecting any other adjoining lots.
I'm really glad that the sewer's going to be working before the daycare center starts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Are there any other questions for Mr. Carter at this time? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Probably better served for Tom.
For Tom? Okay.
Tom, explain to me again, are we -- is the waiver to avoid having to post a bond to cover the costs of these improvements? Or is the waiver to now allow a bonding of the cost of these improvements?
The waiver allows the bonding of the line. So the city will have a bond.
An assurance.
If necessary, of course, could call the bond if...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I see some folks. I don't know if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this application or not, but I will ask that at this time, if there's anyone who wants to speak to this application. Seeing none, we have -- you have before you Plan 2008-137F with the 18 conditions. With the 19 condition, I would presume, provided we, the Commission, grant the waiver of Article 4-7D1 regarding sanitary sewers. So at this time, we'll close this portion. Unless there's any other thing that the petitioner or our staff would like to add, we'll close this portion of the hearing and turn it over to the Commission for a motion, discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve Plan 2008-137F, including the 18 stated notes and the 19th granting the waiver. Is the waiver identified some way that we need to -- granting the waiver that's included in discussion items for the reasons given by staff?
We have a motion and a second to approve Plan 2008-137F and granting the waiver of Article 4-7D1 and 4-8. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
If you turn to the bottom of page four, you'll find Plan 2009-2F for Sunny Slope Farm, Area D. And we'll also look at Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3, on the next item, which is 2009-3F. This property is located in the Sunny Slope, which is south of Waveland Museum Lane, which this is where we're going to connect into the property. It's going to, in the future, connect to Waveland Museum Lane. It's west of the railroad tracks and just north of the county line. But these plans were presented to the committees. They were both recommended with postponements. They had standard conditions plus some additional cleanup conditions. First plan had 12. The second one had 11. The staff has since then received the compliance report. If you look at the brown copy that matches the agenda, you'll see that they have completed the compliance report. So on both of them, on Condition Number 9 on the first plan of 2009-2, that can be deleted. And then, Item Number 7 on 2009-3 Sunny Slope, that can be deleted. And believe that after that, that was what was causing the postponement. We believe these plans can now be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Can you go over those two deleted conditions again? I missed those.
Plans were postponed due to Article 4-5B of the Land Subregulations, which was for the report on the completion.
Okay.
And we had not received this at the time of filing. And after the subdivision meeting, or they were able to give this to us so that we were able to have it for review before this meeting today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Copeland at this time? Ms. Phillips?
Cheryl, what about Condition Number 12, resolving the easement conflict with the building envelope as shown on the approved development plan?
This plan is creating new easements. It's my understanding that they have the footprints staked, and they just want to make sure that we are not hitting any of this new sanitary easement that's going through here, and we believe it's been missed.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Are there any other questions for Cheryl? So this is the report that we now have and...
Yes, sir.
...documenting compliance with progress of...
Yes, sir.
All right. Took me by surprise, being so many pages.
Yes. I'd say this one's the first one that this lane.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are no other questions, petitioner? Is the petitioner present? Petitioner? Is there? I saw you sitting back there. I didn't know if we're talking about Sunny Slope.
Kitty Hall Harmon, Hall Harmon Engineers. We accept the conditions on both of those and a request of approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Harmon? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application? Okay. Thank you. At this time, you've heard presentation of staff. You have before you the report provided by the petitioner documenting compliance and thus allowing deletion of Condition 9 on the first plan, Plan 2009-02F, and then deletion of Condition 7 on Plan 2009-03F, Unit 3, Phase 2. If there are no further questions, we'll close this portion of the hearing and turn it over to the Commission for discussion and our motion. Ms. Copeland, did you have a... Yeah, please. Sure. Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval for Plan 2009-02F Sunny Slope Farm, Area D, with removal of Item Number 9, and also approval for Plan 2009-03F, Unit 3, Phase 2, with removal of Item Number 7.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question, I guess, for staff. Are these two at the same address? Or should we take these two separately? Or is it okay to take these two combined?
It's okay to do it combined.
It's okay to combine. Okay. I'm sorry. Did I -- I heard a second on that, I believe. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, on page five of your agenda is the next item. It is Item J, Plan 2008-123F Providence Place, Track 3. This plan was previously approved by this Commission on November 20th, 2008. It has been brought back to you for a waiver discussion. It has been brought back to you for a waiver discussion. And you might be inclined to say deja vu all over again because the waiver request before you is also for the permission to bond the extension of a sanitary sewer line to serve Lot. Now, again, you just recently saw this, I know, so here's Providence Place Parkway, Newtown Pike. The plat that you have approved is a lotting pattern here. You will recall, I'm sure, that in that discussion, you were requested and you granted a waiver of this stub street in your approval of this plat. The waiver before you today is to... The ability to bond a sanitary sewer extension to serve Lot 5. The information supplied by the applicant has stated that there is a sewer easement here that will provide sewer across Providence, and they'll locate a manhole here in the stub street right-of-way. That manhole will have laterals that will provide service to 3 and 4. Now, this is a similar issue to the previous request in that they too will have to run an eight-inch lateral, and it's in excess of 150 feet, it's approximately 180 feet, and set a manhole to provide service to this lot. The applicant has relayed to us several concerns. The request is based on hardship, that they have run into rock, which has created a problem for them in this entire development. They also, as stated previously, when you exceed that 150-foot limit, you have to go to the Department of Water and request approval of that eight-inch line. That can be a lengthy process, sometimes, again, depending on workload, but it can take a matter of a few weeks to a couple of months. So the applicant is requesting, again, a waiver. They will, they're requesting to bond the construction of a sanitary sewer line here. Staff has reviewed it. We have recommended approval. However, there are conditions of approval, you can see on your report, and that includes that there will be no occupancy permits issued on Lot Number 4 until this line is constructed. And that is relevant because they want to build this with the construction of the stub street, which was, again, subject of your previous waiver. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Owens?
Thank you. Tom, okay. My lotting, I guess, was a little bit off to begin with, but Number 2, which is to the left of the stub street, is currently going to be sewed. The 4 and 5, am I right? To the right of the stub street is not going to be sewed until a later date.
It's my understanding that when they extend this sewer here, they will have to do that in order to get this plat signed. So this manhole will be available to serve these two lots.
Okay. But what were you saying as far as running in front of that?
They're going to have to run that extension, which is a subject of the waiver request, from this manhole to Lot 5.
Okay.
Which they would, again, like to coordinate with the construction of the stub street.
Okay.
I had a question, Tom. So are there sewers in the right-of-way of Providence Place Way that were sewers rendered? They run up to the stub street? Were they existing?
It is my understanding they will, yes, sir.
And the reason they didn't extend them was because of rock?
Well, they will extend them, but they're asking not to extend them at this time to Lot 5, to allow the plat to be recorded, bond that. Rock is one of the justifications for the waiver. It could affect the depth of the line, which is important and can be significant.
Thank you. Tom, I had one other question. Condition 11, is that an additional waiver?
Condition 11 is the waiver that you granted already.
Okay.
So if you approve this, you can strike that condition.
Okay.
Because you have already granted that waiver. That was the stub street waiver.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. All right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. Martin? Okay, thank you. Petitioner?
Rory Kaylee with EA Partners. We are in agreement with Tom's recommendations here. I guess, to further answer your question, when the plan was first filed, the, there was only two lots, and we never anticipated a public street here. We were just going for lotting. So we had a manhole, it was going to serve them. Over the weeks of negotiations on what to do, then we went to access easements. Finally, we ended up at a public street and three buildable lots, I know. Excuse me, open space lot. At that time, and when we asked for this waiver, had I gone through all the construction documents, I would have known that this existing sanitary sewer easement didn't have a line in it. We thought that this would be on the stub and tie in and be done. And we spent the last two months going through the certification of the subdivision plan, getting this ready, and we started looking back at how we're serving this. This is an existing easement, it was recorded back when we thought this was the route during construction, they ran the line this way. So Lot 5 would have two options that they could build their sewers to, when we finally get a development plan on it and we move forward. So the, you know, there is existing sewer under the future right-of-way. Both the lots will tie into it, and we're asking that we be allowed to get a waiver to construct that sewer easement at such time as we have the street being constructed and a development plan for one of the lots.
Thank you, Mr. Kaylee. Are there any questions for Mr. Kaylee at this time? Thank you, sir. Audience is dwindling fast. I don't see really anyone out there that may want to speak, but I do have to, by protocol, make that request if there's anyone willing to speak. The staff, have any additional things they'd like to add at this time? Commission, you have any questions for petitioner? All right. Okay, we'll close this portion and then turn it over to the commission for further discussion. And our motion, you have before you, I believe, 12 conditions. Condition 11, that waiver has been granted by this body. And then you also have a request for a waiver of Article 4-7 regarding the bonding of the portion of sanitary sewer on the tan sheet. So with that, I will ask the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of, reapproval with, of Plan 2008-123F, including the two waivers, and based on the recommendation from staff for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reapprove Plan 2008-123F, granting the waivers as recommended by staff for the reasons provided. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sali?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The next item, I believe, that's on your agenda for your consideration appears on page six. This would be Item B, DP 2009-01, an amended final development plan for the Lansdowne Shopping Center. The Lansdowne Shopping Center is located at 3319 through 3369, Tates Creek Road. We have rendered for you a revised version of this development plan that staff has received since those of you on the subdivision committee reviewed this plan last week. And we have a revised recommendation that's been passed out to you on the pink sheet prior to the start of today's meeting. The shopping center, of course, is on Tates Creek Road, to the north of New Circle Road, which is off the drawing to my left. And the proposed change to this development plan is very small in scope compared to the entire shopping center. This portion, the center portion of the shopping center, in somewhat close proximity to a BP gas station that is most visible on Tates Creek Road, is proposed for a 1,284-square-foot addition to one of the existing restaurants in the shopping center. Very near the restaurant, to the right, is an existing dry cleaners that is proposed to remain. It does have a drive-through facility in very close proximity to the proposed addition. The existing restaurant is to the south of the proposed addition, and adjacent to that is a, right, a drugstore, right in the center of the shopping center, orient you to the location. The subdivision committee last week reviewed this plan, and you can see from your agenda, there were 17 conditions, pardon me, 16 conditions, recommended for review by the subdivision committee. The plan was recommended for approval, but the committee had quite a discussion about the proposed addition and the remaining pedestrian sidewalk in front of the proposed addition. I'd like to go to the overhead and show you some more detailed views of that sidewalk area. First, we have aerial photo, again, to orient you a little more to the location of this proposal. Tates Creek Road is here. Gas station I mentioned is here. We have the cleaners, pardon me, dry cleaners is here. The proposed addition is at this location, existing restaurant, and the existing drugstore here, of course, off-street parking in the front. This is looking now from the north at the exact same location. We have the dry cleaners, the restaurant here, proposed addition in this area, which currently is an outdoor seating area on the sidewalk, and then the existing drugstore at this location. I would ask you to review the two speed humps at this location. That will help for orientation of the remaining exhibits. This is the original development plan submission that shows the proposed addition of 1,284-square-feet and the fact that the curb will be more squared at this location to accommodate that addition. The distance of the sidewalk here was the issue discussed by the committee last week. This is a blow-up of that same exhibit with some additional information. In talking with pedestrian planner and also briefly with traffic engineering, the staff has a proposal that we think works better for this particular expansion and one that we think will meet the discussion items that were given last week by the subdivision committee. In just a second. The drive aisle currently is in excess of 24 feet. And 24 feet is generally a number that the traffic engineering division likes for parking lots for two-way traffic. And certainly, there is a need to keep two-way traffic in front of this proposed restaurant and the expansion. However, it appears if this drive aisle is narrowed to 24 feet, that a sidewalk of about seven and a half feet can be provided in front of the addition. That would be a wider sidewalk than is on the current proposal, and we think one that's more in keeping with the remainder of the center. Sidewalks generally at this shopping center are wider than that. However, in talking to the pedestrian planner, she thought seven and a half feet was a good minimum dimension for this particular location. That would involve relocating the curb to this location rather than the solid line of the existing or the dashed line of the current proposed on the development plan. In reviewing the conditions for the plan, that appear in your agenda, the first eight are ordinary type of sign-off conditions from the different urban county government divisions. Condition 9, correct plan status and plan title. It is identified as a minor plan. Of course, it's a major amended plan. Item 10, building dimensions and parking spaces requiring dimensions, again, a cleanup kind of condition. Conditions 11, 12, 13, and 15, I just ask for clarified information on ordinary type of development plan information. Number 14, clarify parking statistics. The staff's calculations and looking at the previous development plan, we believe there's some inaccuracies with the required parking information on this plan. We think that with this addition, this shopping center will be very close to the minimum amount of parking required. There is a large amount of parking behind the shopping center, of course, as the plan, as you view the plan and historically with this plan. But we would like the parking statistics clarified. We do think that there is enough parking to allow this addition for the additional restaurant seating that's being proposed. Condition Number 16, again, is another cleanup kind of condition, just addition of existing easements to the property. The condition Number 17 that you have before you needs a slight revision, and that is due to the fact that we received this plan a couple of days ago since your committee meeting. This was drafted under the original version. On Number 17, there is still a need to identify the addition's proposed floor elevation information, which is the last half of what you see under Number 17. The first part of that condition can be deleted because the applicant's revision has addressed the change in the floodplain due to the new floodplain maps that went into effect late last year. So that is a change from what the subdivision committee reviewed a week ago. What we would ask 17 to read now is identify the addition's proposed floor elevation information. That is because the, most of the shopping center is in a floodplain, it will be necessary to document that the floor of the addition is above the floodplain to meet the floodplain requirements. The floodplain is very shallow at this location, so that is important information prior to the certification of this plan. And then finally, Condition Number 18 relates to the diagram I showed you on the overhead, where we would like that sidewalk in front of the addition to be a minimum of seven and a half feet in width from the building to the curb. And that would also include the existing canopy in front of the restaurant that would give us a foot or two or three feet additional in front of that as well. And as you may have seen from the photo, it's in very close proximity to the existing curb. We think that would be a necessary improvement as well. The staff is recommending approval of the plan with the two modified conditions, 17 and 18. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions from the commission about the revised submission that's before you or about our revised recommendation this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Sali. Are there any questions for Bill at this time? Ms. Copeland?
Mr. Sali, we're going to get seven and a half feet and then possibly some more porch space, is that what I'm hearing?
I am not aware that there is any porch space proposed between the front wall and the sidewalk. I'm not sure if the petitioner's engineer is familiar with those types of details. This plan does not indicate that. And I think in talking, talking with the pedestrian planner, that's not our expectation, is that there would be any porches or any outdoor seating in that seven and a half-foot area.
So no columns, no overhang, nothing?
There's no canopy shown on this plan for that seven and a half-foot area.
So it's just seven and a half feet?
That's our impression, is that you will have a, from the curb, you'll have the drive aisle for the parking, pardon me, for the parking lot, the curb, a sidewalk of seven and a half feet, and then the wall of the structure.
Okay.
It's possible they may want to put an awning or something in front of this addition. If you're familiar with that shopping center, there are a number of awnings on the buildings. There are a few canopies. Canopies are required to be shown on development plans, awnings are not. So it is possible that they might have an awning or something to mark the entrance to the restaurant addition.
Well, with changing that, doesn't it change the buildable area?
The buildable area on the diagram that we put for you is not proposed to change from what you viewed last week. And the revised submission also does not alter the buildable area of 1,284-square-feet that's proposed. What is different is the amount of sidewalk width from the... What is different is the amount of sidewalk width from the front of the addition into the drive aisle area. That is what we're asking be changed on the plan that's before you, to where we can increase that sidewalk from four feet to seven and a half feet.
But it just goes over to, it just goes north. The sidewalk area goes north. When you step out of, quote, Oscars and go straight to the parking lot, is it going to be seven and a half feet there?
Yes, that's our, that's what we're asking that this plan show, is once you come out of the new building addition, that you have a sidewalk area of seven and a half feet before you reach the curb and the car is traveling in the parking lot.
Wow.
It's a difference of about two and a half feet, three and a half feet, from what you viewed last week.
Even so, if you have seven and a half feet in an open field, you have more workable sidewalk than seven and a half feet against a wall, particularly if you've got wide hips. So we're really talking about a, maybe a six-foot wide sidewalk functioning, which is minimal at, at the most.
I would agree with you. Most pedestrian movements are a short distance away from a wall. They're not in close proximity. That's true.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to respond that we thought the drive aisle dimension was fairly important, to try and keep that as close to standard as possible, and then the concept was to then maximize the remaining area for sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Sully. Do we have, Ms. Whitman?
I just want a clarification. On number 18, you say, "and increase sidewalk width in front of existing canopy." Is that also seven and a half, to be seven and a half feet, or?
Not in front of the existing canopy. Let me go back to the overhead, and I think I can answer that question.
So what are we talking? I, I just want to know what number.
It is-
Because increase, that could be an inch, or it could be several feet.
This is the area related to the existing canopy. The existing canopy is only one to two feet from the current curb, and so the idea is that this curb, if it's seven and a half feet here, be continued in front of the existing canopy to also allow it to have additional sidewalk area in front of it. We did not provide a minimum dimension because we did not have dimensions of the existing canopy. That's the concept, is continue the curb straight across in front of this canopy.
Mr. Owens?
Bill, in talking about the sidewalk and, and the wall, as you mentioned, the wall, is that a full wall or is it a half wall? Is my understanding this is going to be more of a patio, covered patio or something?
The way this is shown, this is an addition which would be enclosed space, and our understanding as staff was that this was for additional indoor seating for the restaurant. There currently is an outdoor seating area that has a, some planters or a low wall, but this depiction is a building addition to the existing restaurant.
Totally enclosed, then.
That, that's the staff's understanding, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. Sully at this time? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, and get this up here on a human scale, members of the commission and members of the staff, my name is Mike Robbins, and I'm here on behalf of Foster, Rollin, Incorporated, representing the client. To answer your last question, this is not going to be a permanently enclosed structure during all seasons of the year. When the weather permits, my understanding is that there will be overhead roll-up doors that will go up over the ceiling, and you will have open-air seating, much like you see over in Fayette Mall at this restaurant called The Pub or over at Bellagnote, where they have kind of a patio arrangement that's open to the atmosphere in the summertime and in the more inclement weather, they can close it off. So part of the year, people who are walking by down the sidewalk won't feel a wall right next to the middle of this open space into the, into the restaurant area. So additionally, in, in all other instances in commercial development, even when there are cars parked right up against the sidewalk, the minimum requirement is six feet. So without cars coming up and putting their bumpers over this curb, you've got a full seven and a half feet with no occasion for a car to shrink it down to even less. So seven and a half feet, though less than some places in the rest of the shopping center, is, is still a very reasonable, adequate amount of sidewalk. I don't remember anything else that required me to address or clarify any issues, but at this time, I would like to state that we are prepared to comply with all the conditions, and I would like to request a motion for approval, or, yes.
Consideration for approval.
It's consideration for approval. Pardon.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
You can ask for a motion.
Okay, at this time, are there any questions from commission for Mr. Robbins? Yes, Ms. Phillips?
One of the conditions was to denote easements, and I just wanted to be sure that you guys have thought about that, that we're not going to be putting a, a hard structure, a building over top of any existing easements. Has that already been investigated?
There's, there's not any, there's not any easements there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from Mr. Robbins? Okay, thank you, sir. Staff, you have any, any additional items?
I guess the only response would be, we did not view this plan as some type of temporary or seasonal type of addition. It is shown as a full addition. We can certainly clarify that if necessary, but it does have a direct relation upon the parking situation, which, as I mentioned, is very close to the maximum here. So the conditions that we have on the agenda and on the revised staff report, obviously, we will look at those numbers very closely for this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just, I have one other question.
Mr. Holmes?
You know, based on what you're, Mr. Sully's saying, once you look at those, the building square footage and the parking statistics, and if there are some parking issues, then where do you go, is it not approved, or?
It, it could be-
Or you reduce the size of the building?
Exactly. It, it could affect the size of what's a permanent enclosure versus continuation of the outdoor seating.
Thank you very much. Ms. Owens?
I'm not sure if this would be for Mr. Sully or maybe traffic engineering. As far as the new curb, right there where it ties in to the, where the speed bump is in the lower left hand, is, is that, traffic okay with that? That's where, you know, it seemed like it juts out a little bit.
We didn't talk specifically about retaining the speed bumps, but we tried to locate them on this drawing as close as we could from the aerial photography. There wasn't a lot of distance between the speed bump you see in the lower left and the existing canopy, but we did think it important to have that new curb extend in front of the existing canopy, given how close it is to the current curb there. That geometry certainly, I think, with traffic engineering sign-off could change, but that was an issue the staff felt fairly important, was that we needed to increase that distance.
My question was only in regards to how it ties in, the new would tie back into the old curbing?
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Okay, at this time, we'll close this portion of the hearing and entertain further discussion by the commission and/or a motion. You've heard the presentation by staff and petitioner. Subdivision committee has recommended approval. We have revised recommendations on the pink handout. Condition 17 has been modified. The first portion has been stricken, and that seven, condition 17 reads, "Identify the addition's proposed floor elevation information." With that, Chair will entertain a motion. Ms. Copeland? Yes.
I have something else to say.
Yes.
There's a two-story building there where they give dance lessons upstairs, and children take dance lessons. Isn't this right? I'm pretty sure it is. So you have a number of young children coming in and out of that building, and I would be a lot more comfortable with nine and a half feet in width and reducing the addition somewhat, and then the parking works, and let's just not push ourselves into a health safety thing here. So that's just my thoughts on it. It's just too tight. It's not safe, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Any other, any other comments? Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Yes.
I make a motion that we approve this recommendation, changing number 17 to identify the addition's proposed floor elevation information, and changing number 18 to a minimum of nine and a half feet in width.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, as recommended, with the 18 conditions, revising condition 17 and changing 18 to nine and a half feet in width. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, while, while staff is getting set up, I have to recuse myself from this next application on page, bottom of page seven, and I would like to turn the chair over to Mr. Day.
I believe this is our last item on the agenda, this is on page seven, DP 2009-5, the Joyce Fields property. It's a property located at 701 Red Mile Road. This is the current Ryan's Steakhouse location. For Sales Road is right up here. Red Mile Place comes off of Red Mile just to this point down here. The existing location for the Ryans is on this portion of the lot. The proposal is to redevelop Lot 1A, which is the Ryan's Steakhouse location, with a 58,000-square-foot retail and warehouse use. 8,000 is for the retail, and the remaining 50,000 is for the accessory storage. The plan shows 99 parking spaces. The applicant is required, I believe, under his square footage, for 91. Subdivision committee recommended referral of this plan due to the two remaining discussion issues. Condition number 11, to discuss the extent of the development plan. The previous development, please, the previous version that the engineer brought in did not include this area or the retention basin up in this corner. It was just this lot. We wanted to see the rest of the development plan to show retention for the overall development plan that had come in previously. The purpose of the amendment is still just for Lot 1A, but the rest of the plan that has always been amended is now included. Number 12 was to discuss the parking floor area. There was some incorrect calculation based on the floor area for his parking. The plan you, you saw, subdivision committee had a total parking required of 88 spaces. He's corrected his parking floor area and has a minimum, or total parking required of 91 spaces. His three, he was, parking went up by three. His total space is provided is still 99, so basically, his overage has decreased by three. With those two discussion items resolved, staff is comfortable recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mrs. Apprient, would you speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Andy Holmes with Midwest Engineering, and we're representing Ryan's Rendall in their application today. We met with the planning staff and the Division of Engineering because of the detention questions that came up, and reviewed the revised plan with, with them, and the Division of Engineering has indicated that both the graphical representation of the detention shown, plus note number 10 on the plan, where we've outlined our plan for mitigating the additional impervious area with additional detention, is satisfactory, and we are in agreement with the staff's recommendations and conditions of approval.
Thank you. Is there, that was Mike Randall. I don't think there's anyone in the audience, so we'll go back to the staff.
I probably should clarify, the conditions 11 and 12 could be deleted. I didn't make that clear, but those two have been resolved, and they could be deleted.
Okay, are there questions or comments from the commission or for either the staff If not, I'll call into this hearing and turn it over to the commission for a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of DP 2009-05 with the deletion of number 11 and 12 under staff recommendations.
All right, there's been a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by a like sign? The motion carries. Thank you. I'll now turn this back over to Randall. Thank you, Mr. Day. Next item on our agenda is the call and release of bonds, performance bonds and letters of credit. You have a memo in front of you. Chair, at this time, we entertain a motion for acceptance, call and release of bonds.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
We have a motion and a second for the call and release of bonds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next, next item, beginning of each year, we have to elect officers for commission. In the zoning meeting in, the last, the zoning meeting in November of '08, I had asked, or I had appointed Ms. Lynn Phillips, Mr. Frank Penn, and Mr. Mike Cravens to lead the nominating committee and to present to this body at this meeting slate of, of nominees for consideration. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Phillips for a report.
This is really hard. It was really tough. We're, we're proposing that the same slate of officers be reelected for this upcoming year.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Well, also, if, I was going to see if there's any nominations from the floor prior to the second. Are there any nominations from the floor? Okay, saying none. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the slate of nominations.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the slate of nominations. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Look forward to serving and leading this distinguished body. Thank you very much. At this time, we also have the delegation of the secretary's duties, and I would like to ask for a, a motion from the commission that we delegate that duty to Mr. King at this time.
So moved. Second.
This, this group is quick. We have a motion and a second to delegate the signature requirement, signature requirements of this body to Mr. King. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. And I guess at this time, staff, any items?
Chairman, only one announcement I'd like to make today. Remind the commission members that we will be having a work session next Thursday in this room. You will recall, we have quite an ambitious slate of special things that we intend to bring to you this year, so we'll be jumping in with both feet at that next Thursday. bring to you this year, so we'll be jumping in with both feet at that next Thursday. I did want to let you know that originally, we had planned and scheduled for a joint meeting between the Urban County Council Planning Committee and the Planning Commission for next week, at the request of Councilmember Gordon, whose workload really dramatically increased this month, being named to chair the stormwater fee committee. She has asked if Chairman Vaughn and the rest of the commission would agree to move that to February, which we have on your behalf. So that will occur on February the 19th before the work session at 11:30 a.m., and you'll be getting more information about that. But again, so we'll have a regular work session at 1:30 right here next week.
Great. Thank you, Mr. King.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There's also an APA audio conference on Wednesday, the 21st, at 4 o'clock, and I don't remember the exact title, but it has to do with infrastructure and CIP. So that would be good for an hour and a half of credit, training credit for you all.
And.
And if anybody is interested in attending, please let me know by Tuesday afternoon.
And the location for that?
In our conference room.
Your conference room. Okay. Great. I assume, I'm not going to assume, I guess, most, most all of us are current with our continuing education requirement per KRS.
For the two-year period of 2009 and 2010, I don't believe anyone has any training. Fortunately, I think everybody completed their requirement by last December 31st.
Good, good. Thank you. Ms. Copeland?
Ms. Rockers, would you please send us an email?
Sure.
To that effect, about your, what you're pushing, and so we can respond.
Go ahead, too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any, anything from the commission this time?
I just have a question. Is the work session, the joint work session starts at 11:30?
11:30 on the.
On the 19th?
In February 19th. Right. Food will be served, and after the joint meeting, you all just will move then into the regular work session that day.
Okay. Well, I would hope as many of us can make it. I know that, you know, we give considerable amount of our time as is, and we felt that on a work session day, just backing up that day a couple hours would accommodate this, this joint meeting that Councilmember Gordon and I have been talking about for some months and really wanted to have a meeting of these two bodies. So we hoping, we're hoping that it will be quite productive, so. Okay. Well, with that, if there's no further business, Chair will entertain a motion for German.
So moved.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.